Please be seated. All right, good morning, council. I'll move on to item 1.0 on the agenda, additions to the agenda. Any additions? Seeing none, take a motion to adopt the agenda as presented. Counselor Wheeler, all in favor? That is carried. Item 3.0, corrections or amendments to the October 12th, 2016 regular meeting of council minutes, or the October 26th, 2016 organizational meeting of council minutes. Any corrections or amendments there? Counselor Bossert?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On the October 12th, council minutes at 7.5.2, I believe it's supposed to say "all the standard development conditions," instead of it says "all those standard development conditions." So it reads a little differently, and that's the only error I found.
Okay, all right. Item 4.0 is, I'll take a motion to adopt the October 12th, 2016 regular meeting of council minutes, and the October 26th, 2016 organizational meeting of council minutes. Could I get a motion? Counselor Frederiksen, all those in favor? That is carried, thank you. Item 5.0 is our proclamations. This week, we have Bullying Awareness Week for November 14th through 18th, and I have a proclamation to read here. Whereas bullying happens once every seven minutes on the playground, once every 25 minutes in the classroom, and one in every six persons in their workplace. Whereas bullying is a relationship problem, it is wrong and hurtful, and occurs in many environments, including schools, the community, at work, at home, and online. And whereas unhealthy relationships resulting from bullying not only affect children and youth, but these behaviors continue when they become adults. Whereas children, youth, adults, and communities share the responsibility for and have the ability to prevent and stand up to bullying to promote healthy and safe relationships for all citizens of Drayton Valley. Now therefore, I, Mayor Glenn McLean, do hereby proclaim that November 14th through 18th, 2016 be declared Bullying Awareness Week in the town of Drayton Valley, and encourage all citizens to stand up to stop bullying, and to work together to make Drayton Valley a bully-free community for all citizens. Then item 6.0 is our delegations. 6.1, Matthew? Matthew? Help me with your pronoun. Sadorozny? Okay, thank you.
Hello, everyone?
Yeah, good morning.
I'm the organizer for the Great Valley, province of Y Valley. Our goal is to organize and complete our petition process to employ the Alberta MDP carrier, plus a bit, giving the electorate, we, the people, an opportunity to promote this new carbon levy which is being forced upon us. As per the Canadian Federation of Independent Business study of March 2016, 82% of the Alberta people believe the carbon tax will do nothing to reduce the carbon emissions, and will only result in higher operating costs for all businesses. Only 11% of the people are in favor of the tax, contrary to MDP statements that 92% of the people support the tax. Or strictly a grass quote town, the carbon tax, which they have removed, considering it has done nothing to reduce any carbon emissions, sorry. We would feel very honored if you would consider attending our rally, speak to the people five to 10 or more minutes, expressing your views regarding the carbon tax in Alberta and Canada. The speeches will follow by a short question period, and that is it. This rally will be held in full, as well, including in step with legislators. Our rally is being held in Drayton Valley at noon on November 5th, 2016, at 5702 58 Street, Great Valley, Alberta. You can be reached out by email at G O N M at dot enterprises dot T A. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I have just a question. Have you invited provincial, our provincial, M L A?
I have.
To speak to? Okay, good. As you're aware, this matter is entirely within the jurisdiction of the province of Alberta. As you may not be aware, most municipalities in Alberta would not presume to tell the province of Alberta, past or present, what they should or should not be doing. We all may individually have very strong feelings, and I know that that is the case in this community, on this and many other issues. It's not normally something that a municipality would venture into. But having said that, thank you for your presentation, very much, and I wish you a safe and successful event. Thank you. Item 7.0 is, sorry, before we carry on, I didn't ask council if they had any questions or comments. Counselor Long.
Can you just give us the contact info again there?
G O N M, as in Nancy. And as in Matilda, at dot enterprise dot C A.
And this is, this coming, it's November 5th at noon?
Yes, sir.
Yeah. I certainly applaud you for putting this together. I may well attend myself, but as a private individual rather than a member of council?
That's right.
Thank you.
Anything further? All right. Thanks again. Item 7.0, decision items. 7.1, Counselor Naddo, community event grant.
Thank you, Mayor. The town of Drayton Valley recognizes that there are nonprofit organizations that host community events to raise funds and require donations for worthwhile projects, programs, and services. In an effort to support these organizations and their efforts, the town may provide support grants to assist the hosting of community events and initiatives. The funding applications are to be reviewed on a quarterly basis. The fourth quarter deadline was October 1st, 2016, and $5,000 is available for distribution. These events reflect the objectives of the Social Development Plan and the Community Sustainability Plan. Application number one, the Seventh Annual Drayton Valley Health Services Festival and Gala, is an event following the Community Sustainability Plan goal that high-quality medical emergency and protective services are delivered within Drayton Valley, including the Social Development Plan strategy to improve emergency health and services within Drayton Valley and Brazzo County. Application two, Brazzo Gymnastics Club Winter and Spring Rhythmic Gymnastics Shows are sporting events following the Social Development's Plan goal to provide recreational facilities and programs that are available and accessible for all. Oops, sorry, technical difficulties. So there are a couple of options available for application one. I'll just do two separate motions for two separate grants. So I move that council award the Drayton Valley Health Services Foundation Seventh Annual Foundation Festival and Gala funding in the amount of $2,500 to support the Children's Christmas Village from the Community Event Grant.
All right, thank you, Counselor Naddo. We have a motion before us. Any discussion on this motion? Counselor Bossert?
Oh, sorry. Thank you, I just want to say, I've had the pleasure of attending a number of these functions through the DV Health Services, and the work they do every year to bring together people, as well as funding for different initiatives in the community, is, I find, very important, and I wish them well with their gala.
Thank you. Anything further? All right, all in favor? That is carried. Counselor Naddo.
Application two, I move that council decline the funding request for the Brazzo Gymnastics Club.
Thank you, Counselor Naddo. Any discussion on this motion? All right. All in favor? Opposed? Carried? Thank you. Item 7.2, Counselor Long.
Thank you. The town of Drayton Valley recognizes the importance of sport and recreation in our community, and has established the Roger Coles Memorial Youth Sports Grant to recognize the sacrifice and dedication of our young individuals in sport. The grant is designed to provide financial assistance to local athletes with expenses associated with different levels of competition. Administration has reviewed the applications and confirms that the applicants meet the eligibility guidelines of the Roger Coles Memorial Youth Sports Grant. The applicants are Avery Wiseman, who competed in eight events at the 2016 Canadian Age Group National Swimming Championships. Hoping I'm getting this right, Casey J. Hines, who represented Alberta on the U-16 Female Rugby Team at the Nationals, and Ivy Samuel Leach, and again, I apologize if that's incorrect, who represented Alberta also on the U-16 Female Rugby Team at the Nationals. So I'm going to, without further ado, make a motion that council award Avery Wiseman funding to the amount of $1,560 to help offset the cost of participating in the Canadian National Swim Meet, and the money to come from the Roger Coles Memorial Youth Grant.
Thank you. We have a motion before us. Any discussion on the motion? All right, all in favor? That is carried.
Then I will make a motion that council award Casey J. Hines funding to the amount of $1,000 to help offset the cost of participating in the National Rugby Championship.
Right. Any discussion on this motion? All in favor? Counselor Long.
And finally, I move that council award Ivy Samuel Leach funding the amount of $1,000 to help offset the cost of participating in the National Rugby Championship.
Thank you. Any discussion on this motion? All in favor? All, sorry. Yeah, I figured. Let's do this again. All in favor? Opposed? Carried? Thank you. Item 7.3, nine o'clock comes early, eh? 7.3, Counselor Schuler.
Thank you. Worship, Mr. Long is always early, so. The Childcare Operational Board mandated to oversee the operations of the Childcare Centre, and established under bylaw 2008-01-C, calls for three members-at-large, two of which are to serve a two-year term. In preparation for the two board members-at-large terms, which are set to expire in October 2016, administration has advertised for applications to fill the positions. Marilyn Buchanan, applicant number one, and Darlene Ferris, applicant number two, have expressed an interest in serving another two-year term. Request is therefore being brought to the Town Council to reappoint Marilyn Buchanan and Darlene Ferris, sorry, as members-at-large to the Childcare Operational Board. The Childcare Operational Board engages members of the community who serve to address childcare needs of the community, thereby strengthening vital services to our residents. I therefore move that council reappoint Marilyn Buchanan for a two-year term as member-at-large to the Childcare Operational Board, ending October 31st, 2018.
Thank you. Any discussion on this motion? All right, all in favor? That is carried. Counselor Schuler.
Thank you. I also move that council reappoint Darlene Ferris for a two-year term as member-at-large to the Childcare Operational Board, ending October 31st, 2018.
Any discussion on this motion? All right, all in favor? That is carried. All right, thank you very much. Counselor Wheeler, item 7.4, FCSS Board Membership.
Thank you. The bylaw 9814 of the town of Drayton Valley prescribes that the Drayton Valley and District Family and Community Support Services Board shall consist of seven members, who shall be appointed by a resolution of Town Council for a two- or three-year term. The membership for Marilyn Buchanan, Brazzo County Member-at-Large, Representative on the FCSS Board, has expired as of October 2016. Chase Combs' term as the youth representative on the FCSS Board would have expired on October 31st, 2017. However, Mr. Combs has left the community, resulting in the position being vacant. Both positions were advertised, and the three applications were received, one from Ethel Mancow, one from Rebecca Leez, and one from Marilyn Buchanan, who has agreed to let her name stand for the membership on the board for another two-year term. The criteria for the youth representative, including the age range of 18 to 25 years old, such as Rebecca Leez, is eligible to apply for either of the two vacant positions. Therefore, I move that council appoint Ethel Mancow to the FCSS Board as the Brazzo County Community Member-at-Large Representative for a two-year term ending October 31st, 2018, and that council appoint Rebecca Leez to the FCSS Board as the youth representative for the remainder of the vacant position expiring October 31st, 2017.
Thank you very much. Any discussion on this motion? All right, all in favor? That is carried. Thank you. Were there any opposed? Okay, I thought I caught everybody. Okay, good. We are, item 7.5, Counselor Bossert.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At the August 24th, 2016 regular meeting of council, a motion was carried, Resolution 15116, to award Part A of the Mackenzie Avenue Pavement Rehabilitation Project to Parkway Enterprises Limited of Drayton Valley, Alberta, for the sum of $829,842.75 plus GST plus a 10% contingency. Funding for the Mackenzie Avenue project comes out of the Life Cycle Rehabilitation Account, which is funded by an MSI grant from the province. Subsequent to the resolution being passed, it was determined that a severe rainfall event, which occurred on October 22nd and 23rd, was far more serious than previously thought, with significant damage and significant storm and sanitary impacts on our wastewater treatment facility and supporting infrastructure. Administration has determined that these funds are more urgently required to address matters to our sanitary system. In order to ensure the system is sufficiently robust to handle spring melt and rainfall, the work should commence now and over the winter. Administration recommends rescinding Resolution 15116 that awarded the Mackenzie Avenue Pavement Rehabilitation Project. The project can be re-tendered at a future time, when sufficient grant funds are available. Therefore, I move that council rescind Resolution 15116 to award Part A, Mackenzie Avenue Pavement Rehabilitation Project, adopted on August 24th, 2016, regular meeting of council.
Thank you, Counselor Bossert. Any discussion on this motion? Mr. Fraser, did you have any comment that you wished to add?
No, Mr. Mayor, and nothing really more to add.
Okay. No discussion? All right, all in favor? That is carried. Thank you. Item 7.6, Counselor Frederiksen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item 7.6, Property Tax Penalty Waiver for Row 81020900. In reviewing outstanding tax accounts for mobile homes within the Town, administration made contact with the owner for Row Number 81020900 by utilizing an owner listing from the Mobile Home Park Manager. Administration advised the owner of the mobile home that the property taxes were in arrears and that penalties were owed as a result. The total amount outstanding is $3,207.24, which includes penalty fees of $1,480.11. During the discussion with the mobile homeowner, administration was informed that the owner had not received correspondence from the town, but that a letter was sent to the town from the legal representative acting on behalf of the owner when the mobile home was purchased. Upon investigation of the matter, it was discovered that the letter from the lawyer advising the ownership change was located on the town's file. However, it was not updated in the town's billing system. This error resulted in the town not having the current owner listed in its accounting system. The owner has submitted a formal request to have penalties in the amount of $1,480.11 waived, as there was an administrative error on the part of the town. Recognizing that there was an administrative error, the Municipal Government Act was reviewed to determine the authority that administration has to deal with the matter. The relevant information is found in Section 330 and 3331, or 333-1, and 347-1. Administration has the ability to correct the current year of taxes only and prepare an amended tax notice. As the tax rule is in arrears for longer than one year, it now falls under the purview of council to make the decision. Council may consider, where equitable to do so, canceling or reducing tax arrears on file. The information package regarding this matter is included for council's review and consideration. Therefore, I move that council approve a waiver of tax penalties in the amount of $1,480.11 for Tax Rule Number 81020900.
Thank you, Counselor Frederiksen. Any discussion on this motion? All right. This would fall under, we do our best, but everyone is human, and occasionally things get missed, and when things get missed, on the Town Administration end, we own up to it. And there we go. So, all in favor? That is carried. Thanks very much. Counselor Naddo, item 7.7, Arts and Culture Policy.
Thank you, Mayor. Administration has prepared the Attached Arts and Culture Policy, A0516, for council consideration. The policy was drafted in recognition that arts, culture, and heritage are key components to the vitality and identity of our community, contribute to community wellness and sustainability, foster civic pride, encourage innovation and entrepreneurship, strengthen education, and further economic development. The attached policy complies with the principles of the recently adopted Recreation and Culture Master Plan, and is intended to foster the implementation of arts, culture, and heritage from a municipal perspective in all and in municipal facilities. So I move that council approve the Arts and Culture Policy, A0516, as presented.
Thank you, Counselor Naddo. Any discussion on this motion? Counselor Bossert?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm very pleased to see this Arts and Culture Policy come forward after some lengthy discussion on it. I just wanted to note that in the definitions, the word "culture" is undefined, which is unusual for when we set forth policies, but the purpose of not defining that word, "culture", is because it means many different things to many different people. And I just want to say, I believe that this policy will help us keep front of mind the amazing diversity in our community, with our cultural and ethnic community, as well as with other forms of arts and cultures. So again, I'm very pleased to see the policy come forward.
It could be here for a very long time if we wanted to define "culture." Anything further? Shandra.
I just wanted to point out to council that this morning I had left printed copies of the policy at each of your tables, just noting some of the typographical corrections that are being made, so that will be the actual version to be approved.
All right, and so I don't think we need a separate motion. This will be the version that is actually formally adopted by Counselor Naddo's motion, should it pass. Any further discussion? All right, all in favor? That's carried. Thank you. Item 7.8, Counselor Long.
Thank you. All right, at the August 2016 regular meeting of council, administration presented council with a request for subdivision for a commercial parcel of land located within southwest 1749 7 West of the Fifth. The matter was tabled at that meeting to allow administration to obtain the answers to council's questions regarding the necessity and longer-term desirability of 61st Street continuation as a connection between 50th Avenue and Power Center Boulevard, aka 52nd Avenue. The West Central Planning Agency received an application to subdivide a 3.87 acre lot from the remainder of the quarter section within southwest 1749 7 West of the Fifth. The property is currently owned as C2, that's General Commercial District. Currently, there are two parcels of land that are known as the remainder of southwest 1749 7 West of the Fifth. The purpose of this application is to subdivide this parcel out from the remainder of southwest 1749 West of the Fifth, and provide it with its own legal description. West Central Planning Agency conducted a site visit on June 28th of this year. These lands are vacant, except for a small metal building located on the site. Currently, neither the existing Power Center Area Structure Plan, that's bylaw 201414D, nor the Municipal Development Plan, bylaw 201227D, MAP 8, shows the future extension of 61st Street from 50th Avenue to Power Center Boulevard. Administration conducted a site visit on August 25th, 2016, and determined that an extension of 61st Street would not be feasible to connect to Power Center Boulevard, otherwise known as 52nd Avenue, as there would be visibility issues resulting due to its location on a curve, as well as the proximity to existing intersections. The existing 61st Street is only to provide access to Lot 2, that's Alberta Energy Resources, Lot 11, that's Lubers Express, Lots 1 to 5, that's previously led a logging, and a portion of the remainder of southwest 1749 7 West of the Fifth. In speaking with the applicants, there are no immediate plans to develop this parcel of land. Currently, the land is occupied by an active well site, which would need to be reclaimed prior to any development taking place. Although there are no plans for development in the near future, this has given administration the opportunity to not only look at 61st Street as it relates to the connectivity to Power Center Boulevard, but also the area structure plan and its contents with regard to any potential deficiencies as it relates to the comprehensive transportation network. No comments or concerns have been received from other agencies, utilities, or adjacent landowners. Alberta Transportation has no objection, as indicated in the letter of April 27th of this year, and authorizes the subdivision authority to grant a variance to the proposed subdivision. Reserves are owed and have been deferred to the remainder of the unsubdivided quarter section by caveat in 2008. It's recommended that the caveat stays on the remainder, being the northwest portion of the quarter section, and be discharged from the proposed lot. The proposed subdivision complies with the land use bylaw Power Center Area Structure Plan, as well as the Municipal Development Plan. West Central Planning Agency recommends approval of subdivision application DV1601, subject to seven conditions as outlined below in Option 1. Therefore, I move that council approve, I've lost the subdivision name, subdivision application DV1601, with the conditions as attached.
Thank you, Counselor Long. Any discussion on this motion? Counselor Bossert?
Thank you. Under comments, it does say that administration conducted a site visit and determined that the extension would not be feasible to connect to the power center because of visibility issues and its relation to a curve. And then we put in a submission to subdivision, sorry, to the West Central Planning Agency, and they said it was fine, so I'm wondering what the difference was between what administration saw and what West Central Planning saw, that one recommends moving forward and the other says there's no problem.
Mr. Fraser?
Sure. I guess I bring my previous planning experience with Alberta Transportation.
Sure. I guess I bring my previous planning experience with Alberta Transportation to the fore in this. It is undesirable to have intersections, new intersections, new accesses close to major intersections, such as on Sixty-second Street. The other aspect is the curve, and it's always important to keep an access or a new intersection preferably away from a curve. Now, understandably, the existing access on Fiftieth Avenue, it has its own issues, I guess, but Alberta Transportation has already reviewed it. They're amenable with it, which is, I guess, a point in our favor, towns favoring the developer going forward. Plus, I think we've got a wider road there, and there's configurations that can be put in place when the developer wishes to develop at that location. That could be implemented, that I believe that could be done safely and appropriately. And I just don't think we should mitigate, sorry, I guess, make the issue worse by having, you know, a somewhat busy intersection on Fiftieth Ave., and then putting a similar sort of thing, again, on the Power Centre Boulevard. So, I guess it's my transportation experience that came into effect there.
Thank you. Anything further?
I recall the, two things, I guess, in the comments section, just for future reference. The name of the provincial agency is not Alberta Energy Resources, it's Alberta Energy Regulator. And I recall in our August meeting, the stumbling block for this proceeding was my inquiry whether Sixty-first Street extended to the Power Centre Boulevard was either desirable or appropriate. And I see the comments in the background indicate that it's neither of those things from administration's perspective. Is there any further comment that you want to make? I think you've kind of covered it already, but I'm just giving you a last kick at it.
Nothing really further. We noticed that there was a narrow road allowance in place there, I guess, historically. And, you know, if there was going to be a connection, there'd have to be acquisition of additional land. But just from the geometric safety perspective, we feel it doesn't make sense to bring it to Power Centre Boulevard, confine the issues down to Fiftieth Avenue, put a proper sort of intersection treatment there. That'd be the best approach.
Very good. Thank you. Anything further? All right, all in favor? That is carried. That concludes our decision items. We'll move on to eight point O, Department of Reports, Engineering and Development. Mr. Fraser?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll just have to grab my notes here. So, it's been pretty busy the last two, three weeks here. We've been actively de-sludging Lagoon Cell One, Cells One and Two at the wastewater treatment facility. This will give us a lot more capacity in the springtime, especially with the spring runoffs. And even though it's quite costly, it's something that has to be done from a maintenance perspective anyway. So, we're very pleased with that progress. It's almost, it is completed. Cell Four, we do have a problem at Cell Four, Birm, it's sloughing. I guess, in general, kind of the age of the wastewater facility is kind of catching up to us. And we have consultants working on it. We're still exploring various methodologies to dealing with it, but we are heavily working on it. And there will, repairs will be done, whether it's late this fall or early next spring, we're still trying to decide. We are working on some repairs to the access road at the, down to the old water treatment facility. Some of the trucks are having issues getting down the hill, so we're blading it and probably adding more crushed aggregate, and that should improve things. We have taken repairs on our existing lift station pump and certainly have to commence repairs on a sewage lift pump. Off note, the utilities manager indicated that the mayor's letter to the schools was a big success, as over the next couple of weeks, we have over a hundred students coming for tours at the new water treatment plant. Maraw State Public Works has been working with the consultant representing the developer to wind up some final acceptance certificates. There still are a couple of issues, but most of them will be signed off. As for Public Works itself, they have all their equipment all ready now for winter snow season. Calcium and chips have been stockpiled and are ready for sanders. And the Christmas and winter banners and lights will be erected shortly after Remembrance Day. With respect to the fall cleanup, it was completed in four days, October eleventh to fourteenth. There was a lower volume of waste materials than previous years. And for the most part, the public was compliant with the requirements. A total of thirty-six tons of material was hauled to the landfill. There is an issue with the sinkhole repair on Madison Avenue. The repair, as of the time I received this information, the repair is expected shortly to eliminate the hazard. And we'll have to wait for asphalt, you know, finalizing it with asphalt and boulevard landscaping until summer of two thousand and seventeen. But thanks from Public Works to Counselor Schuler for his assistance in that regard. As for engineering, minor work is continuing at the open space park development. Most of the work has been completed. Forty-third Avenue extension was paved, and all the first lift was paved on Friday, October twenty-eighth. It was open to traffic after lunch yesterday. There are still a few remaining things left to be done. We're hoping to get some line markings up if the weather gets warm enough late this year, and temporarily, we've got some cones just drawing attention to the sidewalk access. Beckett Road top lift will be deferred until next year, simply to do it at the same time as the top lift on Forty-third Avenue, which will result in better seams and joints. Northwest Quadrant Trails informed by the county who are administering that project that the contractor has confirmed that they won't commence work on the trails until next year. We have issued a curbside waste and recycling collection request for proposal. It was released on October twentieth. It will close on November tenth. That's because our current contract with the waste pickup with GFL is expiring at the end of this year. As for facilities, the furnace in the public workshop recently failed, and a new replacement is being installed, or one of the furnaces, I should say. We're also reviewing, going over all the janitorial and mechanical contracts to see where we can potentially reduce the service level or affect other savings. And we are making adjustments to some of these contracts. For planning and development, the Fiftieth Street ASP draft plan has been circulated to external stakeholders for review and feedback. That includes Alberta Environment, Alberta Transportation, Brazo County, SRD, ATCO Pipelines, and the Wildrose School Division. So, we expect, I believe it's November twelfth that we get the comments back. When that's, when the comments are received, the draft, the draft plan will be presented to the public for review and feedback. So, I anticipate that would be an open house situation. The placemaking survey report was submitted to the leadership team for review and feedback, and we have collected information, survey information. So, I anticipate we'll be following up further on this, probably at GNP in the near future. Off note, our manager of planning and development, Mohammed Shahid Mughal, he will be leaving our services at the end of this week. He's decided that he wants to be closer to family back in Ontario, and so we wish him well in his future endeavors. As for sustainability, the Women in Leadership Program will start again in the new year, in January. We're partnering with local high schools. Credits will be given for those participating in the program. And there will be a more robust program offered this time. And that concludes my report.
All right. Thank you very much. And just to echo your comments regarding Shahid, we certainly thank him for his service to our community and wish him well. Any questions, comments of Mr. Fraser? No? Okay. All right. Community Services and FCSS, Ms. Treason.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. To start off, just want to make a plug out, I guess, to our community services team and everybody else who helped out on the Halloween Haunted House, as well as the River Valley Players, of course, who play an integral part of that whole performance, because it is a performance. But there are about, well, just over nine hundred children that went through the Halloween Haunted House this year. So, things went very well. So, again, next year, we're expecting the same type of attendance. For the past few weeks, of course, probably the major concentration has been on budget preparation for two thousand and sixteen. Of course, looking at how we can take a look at revenue generation, also cost reduction, but also making sure we're hitting the right balance with respect to our recreation, culture facilities, and what they mean to our community, and especially during these economic times. But as we progress, of course, there'll be more information coming to council on that. Certainly, the weather has been, has delayed a number of things within our park development. But tomorrow, with the promise of fifteen, sixteen degree temperature, we're hoping that we can at least get going on some of the last remaining items within the new open space park, and that is, of course, things such as our outdoor fitness equipment. Fall programs are well underway. It's amazing how many different programs there are being offered, not just simply through the recreation program, but within the Omniplex, the Mackenzie Conference Center, our programming coordinator, FCSS, as well as ECDC, so, and certainly the fitness center as well. So, if anybody is wondering if there's anything to do, yes, there is. Just give us a call. The MCC Omniplex, of course, their home party expo is coming up this weekend. If anybody's thinking about having their company take part in the Jingle Balls event, they best hurry, because the second event is close to being sold out. And November sixteenth, of course, is the NHL Legends Hockey Game. So, if anybody's wanting to play against some of the best of the best in terms of our hockey legends, please make sure that they contact the Omniplex staff. We are still following through on some housing initiatives, as well as specialized transportation. So, again, we're still working. Progress is not moving as quickly as we'd like, but we are still trying to come up with some initiatives that we can report to council and community. Also, looking at online registration for a lot of our programs and services. Of course, this, it comes with a cost, but it is so important to have access to people for online registration, not just in terms of customer service, but just ease of registering and, again, promptness with being able to get to those sources. So, we are looking at a proposal for that. And I will not speak about Communities in Bloom, because I would imagine that Counselor Maddow would want to speak about that. And that's my report.
All right. Thank you very much. Eight point three, Economic Development, Eric Burton.
Morning. Morning, everybody. Morning. So, it's been a couple of exciting weeks in economic development. And I'm really looking forward to telling you a story. It's actually a bit of a sequel to the story I began last time I was here. But first, I want to share a couple of updates. So, we had a really successful Small Business Week luncheon, where we had approximately sixty participants. So, we were very pleased with the turnout of the small business community, as well as that many supporters throughout the community. So, I want to thank those of you here today that were able to come and connect with the business community and show your support. We also, in the process, raised money to support youth entrepreneurship. And this was an initiative that came out of a collaboration with the Chamber and the CTC and the county to explore, you know, how can we celebrate Small Business Week in a way that excites the small business community and shows our appreciation for not only the small business owners of today, but the small business owners of tomorrow. And so, this is a adversary program that the Chamber is going to lead on, and it's going to support at least one, if not more, local youth in pursuing entrepreneurship training, which will hopefully be offered through the CTC or other places across Alberta. I also went to Saskatoon to an Economic Developers Association Canada conference, and it was very interesting. And, you know, like every other conference I've been to, I came across some of the irons that Drayton Valley has put into the fire. And I was very proud to be there on half of Drayton Valley. Some of the key speakers that spoke, one was the Canadian Trade Commissioner from Germany. And one of the things that really stood out from what he said was about the fourteen key industries that they're pursuing. And one of them was advanced manufacturing. And I thought, you know, this really dovetails with some of the work we're doing with, especially around hemp. And I'll get more into that shortly. But the PDC gave another great presentation, as they always do. They predict that the economy, world economy, will start to grow a bit more once it becomes adjusted to the lower commodity prices. They say that China is slowing a little bit in its growth, but it's not something that should be concerning, because it's more that it's maturing. It's a maturing economy, not so much a slowing economy. But they did some studies that showed that the firms that are most successful, especially during tough economic times, invest in their workforce at eighty-six percent. So, eighty-six percent of successful businesses during tough times, they invest in their workforce. So, that's something I hope that our business community takes note of. They invest in capital, and they are the most productive, right? So, what he suggested is, you can actually predict the success of a business five years out if you look at their productivity levels. And to help with that, PDC has developed an online tool, which is free, that businesses can use to go on and to compare their productivity to their sector. So, that's an interesting tool that businesses can utilize to get a good sense of how productive they are, because that's a bit of a marker on how successful they're likely to be in the next five years. One of my favorite speakers was Nicole Verkent. She's from the Next Gen Dragons Den. And she developed the Offset Market Exchange. And she talked about innovation and how innovation really only comes about through collaboration. You know, it's not people sitting, you know, in dark rooms coming up with their own thing. One person gets the credit in history, but it's because they're working with large numbers of people. So, that's something that we need to consider around collaboration. Couple, another, we've been meeting with entrepreneurs over the many months. So far, we've had seven entrepreneurs come forward. So, these are people who have ideas that they want to pursue that aren't quite in business yet, as well as eleven entrepreneurs. And we've developed an intake process to be able to help kind of triage where they're at, get a good sense of their challenges and how we can support them. We have a bio-natural roundtable coming up on November seventeenth from ten to three. And I'm really excited that we're getting a really positive response. So far, we have about twenty key stakeholders that have RSVP'd. And most of these people are in the private sector, which is, I think, really important. We're starting to see two key trends emerge. One is around biochar, and the other is around hemp. So, this is maybe an opportunity to tell you my story. So, last week, I talked a little bit about how the biocomposites group Fibromat Plant is going to animate this supply chain, and that creates a lot of opportunities for value added. What I underestimated at that time was the opportunity around the decortication. So, now, across the province, I've seen, I've been part of projects to explore decortication. What decortication is, is there are certain types of crops called... What decortication is, is there are certain types of crops called bast fiber crops, hemp being one, flax being another. And what's unique about these is that they have multiple key streams that you can add value to. So, in the case of hemp, what you have is a long fiber stock, fiber on the outside, you have a very, very short fiber on the inside of the stalk, and then you also have some dust that comes out of that, and you have the seed, okay? So, right now, we have 30,000 acres of, in Alberta, being grown just for seed, and they're being grown on two-foot stalks, because the stalk is waste. Now, Dan is going to, Dan at Medlong from Bio Composites Group, he's going to start demanding the stalk, which means that they're going to grow, they're going to change their seed from a seed-growing variety to a seed and stalk-growing variety. So, they're going to grow the same amount of seed on 10-foot stalks. Now, the farmer is going to, who's making money today on seed, is also going to make money on stalk. So, what I underestimated was that the, the process of separating out the, what's called the herd, and that's the inside, from the bast, and that's the outside, is being done currently by the government facility in Vagerville, which is very inefficient, extraordinarily inefficient. It was designed to help kind of get some research off the ground. It is not a commercialized facility. There is going to be a need for a commercial facility somewhere in the province. And there are a number of applications to get funding from the province for this. I think we have four projects being proposed across the province. We have the only market for that facility, because that facility requires the Bio Composites Fibromat to sign a contract to take their fiber, because that's the value piece. So, we have a unique opportunity, you know, to try to leverage that asset to not only add value to it before, before that product leaves town, but to also attract the decoricator, which splits the stem into multiple streams. Now, this has some interesting results, because while the fiber that is used in the Fibromat is high-value and light, and you can ship it long distances, the inside, the herd, is low-value and high-quantity, so you can't ship it very far. So, for every one ton that the Bio Composites Group is going to use, it creates four tons of herd and one ton of dust. Now, the herd, I just met with a company in Calgary that has a patent called Hempcrete. And what they do is, they create a organic, well, a bio, a bio composite concrete, and they have a market. And all they're waiting for is a partnership with the Bio Composites Group to actually get their hands on herd. And they need a fair amount of it. They're looking, so, but they need to be colo, they need to be collocated with the decoricator. So, I think this is an exciting opportunity, because we've already identified the value-added opportunity, and now we're looking at supply chain. Can we leverage the, having the only facility to actually capture the lion's share of the supply chain and make this ground zero for the hemp industry? So, so that's maybe a big picture for the day. But, but we have met with a number of investors. We have investors from Kentucky coming in a couple of weeks. They're looking at decorticating. And I told you that I was impressed with the German, the Canadian Trade Commissioners, 14 industries. I followed up with him, and we had a long talk over coffee. And he, first of all, said that he was familiar with Drayton Valley because of our partnership with CLIP and the work that we've already done to reach out to, to, to German investors. He, he spent some time doing some research before our coffee, connecting with his head office, and confirmed that there is interest in, among German investors and German companies in exploring some of the hemp opportunities here. And he talked in detail about, in particular, around the, the advanced manufacturing component for car parts, and helped to explain to me some of the value chain and some of the opportunities that could help bring, bring us from where we are today with one basic product to where we could be a generation from now with, with a wide range of, of products. So, the, so that's giving some wind in the sails of our bioindustrial roundtable, where people are starting to come out of the woodwork, because they see the opportunity to connect with many other people. So, we have, we have Warehouser, we have two hemp manufacturers coming. We've got two biochar manufacturers, we've got logistics, at least one local logistics company, one who is expert in biochar. We also have experts from across the field. So, it's going to be a really interesting conversation, and we're already starting to get expressions of interest for property, you know, and specs on what kind of buildings these operations would require if they're going to be moving forward. So, I don't want to, you know, overstate it, because, you know, there's still, you know, a long road to hoe, but there is a lot of opportunity. So, and, and finally, we've, we've set a date for the Tourism Roundtable, and it's going to be on December 1st. And we have confirmed Travel Alberta will be joining us, and so that will be a good opportunity to get local tourism stakeholders together and to explore how we can collaborate to support tourism development.
All right. Well, thank you very much. This is exciting stuff. It's, nothing happens overnight, but with diligence and hard work and determination, it can get done, and we can, we can develop new industry here in Drayton Valley. Any comments, questions of Eric? Counselor Neto.
Good morning, Eric. I was recently at the Creative City Summit in Vancouver, well, just outside of Vancouver. And I attended a session on Etsy, and it's about the maker movement and how local artisans are those local entrepreneurs that are just in a different mold. And what was interesting is, I knew several people who had heard of Drayton Valley because of you. Yeah. Because they had attended your sessions through Simon Fraser on community economic development. And so, they already knew Drayton Valley, which was interesting in that respect, in terms of arts and culture and entrepreneur, but through the entrepreneurship lens, and it was interesting. So, it will be included in my report, but I, they said, oh, well, Eric will definitely get this. So, no pressure.
Absolutely. Well, that's, that's great to hear. Yeah. Appreciate that.
I do have a question on the two roundtables as well. If you're asking council attendance on those, or if you'd prefer that council didn't attend, so, to allow for that free conversation. Sometimes, there's a pro to having counselors attend, and, and sometimes, there are cons. So, I'm just wondering if you're inviting us to attend as well?
Yeah. So, what I've tried to do is gain momentum fairly organically. And in the case of the bioindustrial roundtable, we have a ton of momentum. I think, you know, I'm, and therefore, I think it would be of great value, both to members of council, but also to the other participants, to have, the more, the merrier. In the case of the Tourism Roundtable, you know, I suspect we'll be in the same position, but, you know, we may end up having a smaller group, depending on, on how, how much momentum we can build over the next couple of weeks. So, I'll follow up on that one. But, yes, please, at November 17th, your calendar, I will, I'll send out a, pass around the invite, and, because I think it's going to be an interesting conversation. So, a way we're going to structure it is, we have the biomass feedstock study that was completed by Silvacom. And what it does is, it explains the wood, wood, the agriculture and the waste feedstock that is available here within a 50, 100, and 150-kilometer radius. And so, while a lot of the other communities are having these presentations as a 30-minute presentation to council, we're having it as a community forum. So, we're actually inviting other communities from across Alberta come here, making this the, you know, number-one place for, for discussion around bio, bioindustrial opportunities. So, so that's going to set the frame. There's also an exciting event coming up on December 7th. The CTC is partnering with Bio Alberta, and it is a little bit more geared towards tackling challenges in government. And I think the timing of that is perfect, because what we'll be able to do at the bioindustrial roundtable is, to some extent, park policy issues and how, and encourage that conversation to continue at the December 7th session with Bio Alberta, and allow us to stay in a bit of a space around where we're a bit more blue-sky thinking about the opportunities and trying to make connections, because that's really what the roundtable model is meant to do. It's not meant to solve all the problems. It's about making connections between the stakeholder group, right? So, then, then everyone who leaves the table, they, they don't, they don't all contact me and expect me to do everything. They're doing things, because they've made valuable connections. So, so I think it's going to be a good opportunity, as long as we can make sure we don't kind of get down into any weeds.
All right. Anything further? Thanks so much. Emergency Services. Tom Thompson is looking taller and better-looking. Good morning.
Morning, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Yes, I am stepping in for Chief Thompson. He's at a budget meeting with the counties, so I'll let him do that one. So, I'll be just reviewing some of the September stats for the Fire Services, as well as some little items that have been completed through October. So, an information that was handed out in the package, the Fire Services responded to 27 calls in September. The 18 calls were around, were within town, and then the remainder nine calls were around the county. Out of those 18 calls for the town, the breakdown is, we had one structured fire, three motor vehicle collisions, nine alarm calls, three assisting other agencies, that would be RCMP and EMS, and two miscellaneous calls. In the Brazza County, we had two structured fires, three motor vehicle collisions, one rescue call, two alarm calls, and one miscellaneous call. So, in some of the calls that we responded to in regards to the structured fires, one was a mobile home fire, one was a residential structure fire, and one was a vehicle shop fire. Within the motor vehicle collisions, there was two vehicles versus pedestrian, one vehicle versus a building, an ATV incident, a semi-truck with entrapment, and a vehicle striking loose. In regards to the rescue call, we had a vehicle that was found to be in the river, so we assisted RCMP to actually get a diver out and, and check the vehicle, make sure those don't be in there. Alarm calls, five residential calls, two were to a local school, and four were to, for businesses. In regards to the assist calls, one was with an RCMP seizure, they needed some heavy lifting, so they called us. Assisted EMS with cardiac arrest, so we're doing some medical, and then as well as a lift assist, assisting EMS. The miscellaneous calls was issues with a smoke detector, so citizens not quite sure what, how those function, how they work, and two false alarms. In regards to what has been happening in, in September for what we were doing within the hall, obviously, we're getting ready for fire prevention. That was on top of all the calls that we received. Fire prevention in October is a major part for our education to the, to the public. Typically, it runs from October 9th through 15th, so it runs for a week. In most communities, we go a little further, and we actually run for a full month. And this year, we're actually a little behind, so we're actually just still finishing up. There's one more project with distracted texting with youth that we're working on. So, it covers a full spectrum, and Chief Thompson will have a full report, and I think a presentation to council in the next meeting. Any questions?
All right. Thank you very much. Any questions, comments? Counselor Bossner.
Good morning. Pardon me. Thank you for coming in with your report, always very thorough. I just wanted to take my hat off for your Fire Department Open House that you had a couple of weeks ago. It looked to me like there was great attendance there, children very engaged with your members and with the activities there, lots of education happening. And I think that's how we plant the seeds for youngsters to become interested in public service, whether it's in the Fire Department or any other emergency services. I had the opportunity to bring in some newcomers into the Open House and meet yourself and some of your other members, and also had a young man approach you about how he becomes a firefighter, even though he's new to Canada. And I thank you for taking time to, to speak with him and for the time you took and, and your members took for that evening to open your doors to the community and just show us how great a service that we have in Drayton Valley. So, thank you for that.
Thank you, Counselor. For our Open House, obviously, nobody was counting, but we've anticipated a rough community response of 500 people that attended our Open House. It was very well-received, as well as the other two Open Houses that we had. So, it was very well-received throughout. Thank you.
Yeah. It was well-attended. I was there with my wife, had, had to line up for our hot dog, and, yeah, no, it was great. And the kids love that, those events, and it's a great educational tool for both children and families, so, yeah, thank you. Anything further? All right. Thanks so much.
Thank you.
All right. Communications and Marketing, Tyler Russell.
I guess I'm a little taller than Tom, Tom Thompson as well. Morning, Mr. Mayor and Council. Here's my report from the Communications and Marketing Department. The website has been updated with the 2017 calendar on both our events page and also on the, the council section, to be able to have the calendar and the committee descriptions. That's been updated. Also, of course, we're going to have continued updates on our website as well, weekly, daily, as much as we possibly can. Also, there's been an update to our Automated Traffic Enforcement that does include the Traffic Advisory Committee. It does also have the Delegation Request Form that is also available on there, should people want to be able to be a part of it. The budget consultation wrapped up last Friday, and of course, the report will be forthcoming. I'd like to be able to have the statistics to the public with the release of the interim budget in December. And of course, the participatory budget does close this Friday. The mailer was distributed via the direct mail with the water bills, and also, it is available with the online portal with Survey Monkey. You can go to admin-support@draytonvalley.ca to submit submissions. That's what we got this week.
All right. Anything, Counselor Frederiksen?
With regards to the participatory budget, what kind of trends are you seeing? Are people interested? Are they?
It's too, too soon to say until it's, until it's closed. Once it's closed, I know, we'll definitely have a report available.
Anything further? Did you have another question? No? Anything further? All right.
Perfect.
Thanks so much. I'm going to call a five-minute break. We'll come back with council reports and the information items. Nine point one, Counselor Long.
Thank you. I shall be, as often, brief. Pretty quiet couple of weeks. I did attend a small business luncheon, as Eric mentioned a few minutes ago. I thought it was a well-done event, and nice to be using the Clean Energy Center and bringing some people into that. The only other thing of, of real interest apart from the budget stuff, which has been fascinating, is the Counselor Frederiksen and myself attended Travel Alberta's, really just a day and a half, conference there last week. Lots of stuff on the go there, and a lot of interest in travel from various groups and municipalities around the province. I think everybody's looking at that now as an area of potential growth, as we all struggle to diversify a little. Obviously, I'll be doing a report forthcoming shortly, but a worthwhile event, and I'm sure Counselor Frederiksen will say far more about it than, than I will at this juncture. Thank you.
All right. Nine point two, Counselor Schuler.
Thank you, worship. I'm going to be even more brief than Counselor Long, in that my work has taken me into Edmonton for the last few weeks, and, so I've not been around, so I have nothing. for the last few weeks, and so I've not been around, so I have nothing to report.
All right. Nine point three, councillor Wheeler.
Thank you. I was at the Women in Business Conference hosted at the Clean Energy Technology Centre, and it went over very well. There was lots of people very happy to share and network and connect, so it was a great opportunity for our community and women in our community to show each other what they're doing. So as well as Small Business Week, we had a physician recruitment committee meeting, and we've discussed right now, both the clinics are stable with where they're at in terms of doctor numbers, but there is always the future of where they'll be at, and you never know when retirements or changes will come in the community. So we're still going out there and getting our Drayton Valley name out there. We have been to, up to Grand Prairie. They do a rural program up there where they actually take physicians, and they call Grand Prairie rural, but they do a lot of the residency out of there and work on being more independent than they are in some of the major centers. So we go up and present to them, we have the last couple of years talking about Drayton Valley and what it offers and why they'd want to come here, and a lot of them are people that have come from a rural background, so they're interested in rural medicine in the first place. And then we're also looking at kind of our mandate, and with the physicians being the way they are, is do we want to look at expanding the physician mandate to include other forms of services that the physicians could use help with? So, but we're just at early talks of that, so, and then...
Sorry, can I ask you a question just on that before I lose it? So I have spoken with some physicians, and some are more vocal than others with regard to the sort of resources that they believe will be useful in our community. So the physician numbers is important to them, but also other key occupations in the health services area, occupational therapists, dieticians, all of that sort of stuff. Is there any suggestion by the committee that they might turn their minds to attraction of those occupations?
Yeah, that's exactly what we are discussing, is assessing the whole community in terms of, yeah, any of those types of services. We know there's definitely mental health services that are needed in the community and trying to find some of those, and as the committee, we work a lot in partnerships with the organizations that have those and support those people, but we're being the connection in the community here, and so we want to offer those services to, if there is a dentist that wants to come to town, we can show them around or say, this is what we offer, this is what we have, or any other mental health worker, anything like that. So, yeah, that's what we're looking at, and partnering with the PCN to make sure that they, being a vital key player in our community too, because they do dabble in all of those areas, that they have those connections that we can make, so...
Yeah. I would suggest more broadly than the PCN, the PCN's certainly part of the equation, but AHS employs a great many more people in the community, and they can probably help advise on where shortcomings are.
Yeah. Yep.
Okay. Thank you. Sorry, please continue.
Yeah, no, just wanted to say that I was at the Aim for Success pumpkin carving night and a lot of the other Halloween activities we had in our community, and that they were really well-attended, and everyone seemed to be out and enjoying the community and the community spirit, so it was a good weekend. And I wish everyone a happy Remembrance Day.
Thank you very much. Nine point four, councillor Bossert.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On October 15th, I was able to attend the dinner for the Women in Business Weekend, and I wanted to just send my congratulations to the organizers. I understand it was very well-attended and very well-laid out and planned, a lot of very positive feedback from the conference, and congratulations also to the award recipients. It tipped their hat to some very significant women in business in our community that we should be very proud of. On October 17th, I attended the Small Business Luncheon at the CTC. On the 19th, we started in earnest with some of our budget discussions, and I have to say, I think will be very, very microscopic, maybe a strong word to use, but we'll be looking very diligently at our budget going through the process this year. Also, on the October 19th, I attended the fire department's open house, and as I mentioned earlier, I think it was very well-attended, and I just really enjoy seeing the young people that that event brings in and the seeds that are planted that day when children are at the open house. On October 25th, I attended the Black Cat Appreciation Day at Rotary Library. Several small children were there with their mums, and a number of small kittens were there. The Rotary Library has a program that celebrates weird and wacky holidays, and that happened to be the day of Black Cat Appreciation Day. So it was a lot of fun with the little ones, but I also want to tip my hat again to the work that both of our libraries do in our community. The programming that we offer is top-notch. We really have a lot to provide for our community, and every time I'm into either of the library, there's always something going on. So thank you to our library staff. October 26th, we had Governments and Priorities. October 27th, we had Waste Management Meeting and started talking about our bylaws and policies. Just want to remind the community, of course, of our Remembrance Day services at the Legion on November 11th, always a good turnout to honor our war veterans. And also, on November 17th, we will be having breakfast with the guys with, sorry, Pembina Crisis Connection Society, highlighting public, sorry, domestic violence. So hopefully, we'll have a good turnout for that event as well, and that's my report. Thank you.
Thanks very much. Councillor Frederiksen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As councillor Bossert had said, we have our, we had our Waste Management Meeting. One of the big pieces of discussion there was the request for a proposal that went out for our waste collection services, and the RFP on this one was purposely kept fairly broad. We are really hoping, I think, at the time that we had entered our contract previously, there was only, I believe, one provider. What we were told now is that there's at least three, and we're also looking at if people are able to provide partial services, so then you're able to, it's not limited to the large waste management bodies. So we're really hoping that we're going to get some really good response to that and see what comes of it. I had a Healthy Communities Coalition meeting, and I am sorry, I don't have dates attached to this, I've misplaced my phone and with it my life, so, but Healthy Communities Coalition meeting, and I just wanted to, so I mean, that committee is always chugging along, they always got something going on, and one of the things that is often a topic at the table is, okay, what is our priorities so that we don't bog everybody down? But I do want to say, welcome, passing the torch over to councillor Wheeler. I believe she will enjoy the people that sit at that committee table. As councillor Long had noticed, mentioned, sorry, I attended the Travel Alberta Industry Conference as well, and conference, so this was a very packed conference. It was quite a different atmosphere from the one that I attended in Camrose in February. There was quite a bit more learning sessions, you're going from one learning session to the other. However, in between learning sessions, we did have the opportunity to do some networking, at least, and that's the piece that I enjoy the most out of these kind of conferences, is just the networking, getting some contacts, seeing where perhaps we can mutually benefit our community. One of the things that really, there was, there's a lot, and there'll be a report, but one of the things that really stuck out at me too is, in reflection of our small businesses that we have, part of it is a mental shift that has to happen, that we do have things that can be considered tourism. We have a lot of restaurants that are locally owned that would qualify for Travel Alberta's ADIS 2.0, which is a platform where they push stuff out on a larger scale. We have, you know, a lot of recreation facilities, outdoor things. Our municipality facilities would also qualify for those kind of things. However, the one thing that really stuck out, and this might be an opportunity for us to partner with our friends at Norquest, as well as perhaps the Chamber of Commerce, is one element that businesses really need is a web presence. Our community is very Facebook-heavy, and at the Women in Business Conference and speaking with Heather with Chamber of Commerce, she had said that one of the social media speakers there had also noted that, that it's very Facebook-heavy. The issue with just using Facebook is that Facebook could shut down tomorrow and you lose all of your information and all of your pictures or photos or whatever. A web presence, so even just having a website, a basic website, is one of the requirements for some of the, for the ADIS tool, but also something perhaps that we have to look at at building that capacity of our business owners of just having a static site, they can still use their Facebook page, but then also one of the other things was also the Facebook marketing. So getting people to really understand, you don't have to be in every social media platform, but you can use one or two alongside your website. And anyway, so it was a very fast but fun conference.
All right. Thanks very much. Councillor Naddo.
Thank you, Mayor. I attended the Creative City Summit in Surrey, BC, two weeks ago now, or a week and a half ago, it's all a blur. And some of the sessions that I attended hit on tourism, entrepreneurism, public art, public art policies that are enhanced, any number of things. Museum, did a study tour in a museum, and had some great key learnings that we can bring through our legacy project, as well as the local museum and enhancements and improvements that could be done. So it was really good, especially when we just recently adopted the Recreation and Culture Plan. It aligned very well with a lot of our ongoing initiatives, so it was, it was good. I would recommend sometimes councillors being at these conferences, as a councillor, I was a bit of a unicorn at this one, there aren't as many councillors, it's more heavy on administration. There are councillors there and municipal leaders there, but I would encourage putting our minds to sending administration to this conference next year. I think there's a benefit with networking with other like-minded administrations and really that growth process that can happen, as well with our newly-developed plan and our policy even this morning on being front of mind that we are going to consider arts, culture, and heritage as we move forward. And if that's going to be the case, we're going to need some knowledge and networking opportunities, and I think that needs to happen at those kinds of conferences. All of the communities surrounding us in terms of larger base, like Stony Plains, Bruce Grove, all of them attended this conference as well. Those are great connectivities to happen, to get that, that education really, because we're just starting out on this in our community, and I think we need mentorship as well for that. So I would encourage administration to attend this conference next year, and maybe, I think there's some great learnings that can happen when administration and council can attend these things. So I would encourage somebody thinking to that next October. However, it will be during the time of the election, so I doubt actually, so administration, definitely, but it still might be challenging. That was my Creative City Summit, my report will be forthcoming. And Annette had mentioned previously, just wanted to announce the Communities in Bloom results. I do have a press release, I didn't see it online, so I'm assuming that Tyler hasn't received it. Okay. So I'll read it, and then I'll give it to Tyler to post on our website. The Town of Drayton Valley received Five Blooms rating and a special mention for the Raised Edible Gardens Project in 2016 National International Symposium and Award Ceremonies in Regina, Saskatchewan. The Town of Drayton Valley participated in the 4,501 to 9,000 population category along with Bay Roberts, Newfoundland, Humboldt, Saskatchewan, and Stonewall, Manitoba. Over the summer, trained volunteer judges traveled to participating communities to evaluate the overall contributions to the municipal council apartments, industry, businesses, and private sector, including volunteer efforts, in regards to the following criteria: tidiness, environmental action, heritage conservation, urban forestry, landscape, and floral displays. So following their evaluation, volunteer judges Gail Percy and Bonita Lenworm wrote, "New raised gardening beds are received lots of attention from residents, visitors, and neighbors to the two seniors' housing complexes in Drayton Valley. Championed by the Brazzo Seniors Foundation's Operations Manager and Communities in Bloom Committee member, Ashalum, eight rectangular beds were fabricated and planted with vegetables in May 2016 at the Shangri-La Lodge. Step planters are for herbs, strawberries, umbrella-shaped picnic tables, bird feeders are also in place. Initial solid greens planting proved too attractive to local deer and were replanted after heavy browsing. Bency now significantly improves the yields and being incorporated in residential meals." Based on the enthusiastic and growing interest and involvement of both the residents and the staff in this organic gardening space, plans are already underway for 2017 expansion and improvements. This garden was awarded the 2016 Yards in Bloom by the Drayton Valley Communities in Bloom Committee and received $100 home hardware, Building Center gift cards. So I just want to congratulate Brazzo. The Senior Foundation as well as Shangri-La Lodge, Stella over there, they did get a special mention at a national symposium, international symposium as well, so congratulations to them. Five blooms does mean, we didn't win, we did get the maximum blooms, we were in second place. So, yes, it was apparently a very close, close, close call, but our community should be very proud, and I know, I know we're proud of Shangri-La Lodge and what they've done out there for their residents. I think that's something that is being spoken about now at the symposium of what other homes can do, so it's to be proud of, and everybody should be proud of all their efforts as well as Drayton Valley.
Thank you very much. For my part, I'll just touch on a couple of things. On the 18th, I attended the Drayton Valley Community Overreach School Open House this year. Had some good conversations with the staff there. The, the Community Overreach School is, now has 85 students. They, they are now, because of their enrollment numbers, they are now for the Wild Rose School Division, the designated facility for summer school education. And, and they would very much like to work with our partners in Norquest to ensure that we close the gaps around adult education, particularly completion of high school equivalency, because of course, the Community Overreach School only gets funding from the province up to age 20. But there are many, what they've learned is there are many people beyond that age who require the service and who would benefit from an in-person experience rather than an online learning experience. In any event, so that information has been and will continue to be forwarded to our partners in Norquest. Attended the fire department open house on the 19th, and on the 20th, I was invited to participate in a roundtable hosted by Bankin Nova Scotia, affectionately referred to as Bankin and Eggs. It was a networking breakfast for local business, and it was, I think, a reasonable turnout for a first try, and I understand they'll be hosting further networking events going forward, so it's good to see the private sector taking the initiative in this regard. Also, earlier that week, I wanted to just make mention what I thought was a very effective and successful luncheon for Small Business Week to kick off the week, and just prior to that luncheon on the 17th, what better way to start Small Business Week than to open a small business? And so I was proud to do that at Masala Grill on 50th Avenue, and so good luck to the owners of Masala Grill, and I have eaten there, I recommend it, as I do with all of the restaurants in Drayton Valley. And the 24th, of course, you'll see us all wearing our poppies, and on the 24th of October, I was proud to receive the first poppy presented by the Legion in Drayton Valley, and I encourage everyone to attend Remembrance Day ceremonies on the 11th. I've asked councillor Naddo to speak in my stead, Remembrance Day ceremonies on the 11th, because I think, well, I know that there's, there's an interesting familial connection with service to our nation in her family, and I want her to be able to tell that story. So, no pressure whatsoever, and in any event, I think... So no pressure whatsoever, and in any event, I think as we get farther away from major battles of our past, events like Remembrance Day get their meaning more from personal tales, rather than, not to diminish the significance of a of a well-written speech by a politician, but it just doesn't have quite the, quite the meaning that that a personal message does. So that is why I've asked Councilor Natto to speak on my behalf, and she's graciously agreed, and she's assured me it'll be excellent, so, there we go. I think I'll wrap it up there and move on to the information items. 10.1, the Economic Development Committee meeting notes for July 20th and September 21st. The Brazos Seniors Foundation Special Meeting Minutes for August 4th, the Council Wheeler's AUMA Conference Report, the Childcare Operational Board Minutes for June 21st, the Proclamation for Alberta Foster and Kinship Caregiver Week of 2016, the Sustainability Committee Meeting Notes for August 12th and September 23rd, Star Catholic Board Highlights for October 2016, Childcare Operational Board Minutes for June 2016. Hmm, looks like we've got that twice, maybe. Drayton Valley Brazos County Fire Services September Stats, and the Traffic Advisory Committee Notes for August and September 2016. Could I get a motion to receive those items as information, please? Councilor Natto, all in favor? That is Carrie. Could I get a motion to adjourn, please? Councilor Schuler, all in favor? Meeting's adjourned. Thank you.